Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning, everyone. This is the Lorain County Board of Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. And our inspirational word for the day, whenever we have the opportunity, we should do good to everyone. And we have our dog this morning.
Good morning. This is number 10. She's a female. She's available today. We have 20 other dogs in the kennel. She's a pit mix, bully breed. A little nervous, but she'll be, she'll warm up.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Thank you.
Aye.
Checking everybody out.
In advances, newer payments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Checking everybody out.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
That's right.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet per moves within jurisdiction, Lorain County Commissioners.
County Administrator Jim Cordez, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's good to see you feeling better after yesterday.
Yes, we're getting there.
The, I do have a number of personnel issues I wish to discuss with the Board, more specifically, potential hires at Job and Family Services, the Crime Lab, and the Commissioners Department itself. Also want to brief you on the ongoing labor negotiations with some of our other appointing authorities, Clerk of Courts, Recorder's Office, so forth. Ongoing negotiation with United Steelworkers America has been, it's going well.
place at 10:00 to 10:00? So if we hear any buzzers or anything going off, it's a, it's just a drill.
I just want to brief you on that, as you are the signatory authority on any of those
Right.
Okay.
contracts.
Madam Clerk.
And also one pending legal matter and one pending sale of real estate.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
All of those subjects are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
So I'd ask, at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
and we talk about those matters that I've explained.
Preparations.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Approving the reading in the minutes of March 6th and 13th. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
So move.
Ms. Swita.
Second.
Aye.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey. Transfers.
Aye.
So move.
Ms. Kowski.
Second.
Aye.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey. Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 3,680,000 sanitary sewer improvements Emerald Sewer Project bond anticipation note, Series 2009B. This for the purpose of paying cost of constructing and inquiring sanitary sewer system improvements for the Emerald Sewer Project, together with all necessary appetites thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Hawk Road? No, it's just, I have no idea where it's at.
Yeah, it's, well, I need to talk about both of these in conjunction. We can talk about the specific projects, and then I need to, I need to also increase these amounts because I want to do some more borrowing for something else I'll talk to you real briefly about then later on, more in-depth. This is the Emerald Woods. If you picked up the paper this morning, you saw that Columbia Township's being sued again by Riverside, which is north of this, up on the border with Omstead Falls. It was a little surprising. I talked to Counsel this morning because we thought that matter had been resolved, and it has all been, also been through the Planning Commission, but things change. That, that won't require as much work with the sewer because eventually that'll be tied into the Redford Road sewer via the big pumping station that we put up north there. But this is the Emerald Woods Golf Course and also a parcel just south of, it's south of Redford Farms, right? Redford Farms subdivision. It's all initial stage planning, but we look to be doing a pretty big tiff out there. Our objective is to bring the sewer all the way down, over to the Emerald Woods, and then down Boone Road all the way to 82. There's no sewers down there on Route 82. Controlled development is key. Good land use management is key. Planning is key. But to try to hold back this wave of development that's happening is, is going to be very, very difficult. So you have to manage it. You can't, you can't limit it. You can't, you can't say it's not going to happen. It's coming. So we're getting ready to start the engineering on that sewer. We have some initial engineering specs. I don't know when we'll need to be committed to these funds, but you know, clearly we have $5 million of GEO funding that we either need to pay back or, and we have the $5 million. This is, we didn't use it for the other project, and borrow later or maintain that GEO position as I've talked to you about before. There's not a lot of GEO left, even with the increased capacity of the new valuation in Lorain County. So we have these projects going forward. The other piece, I'll talk about them both at the same time. I think it's going to be more for the parking deck after, I think, much anxiety and frustration by each Commissioner. It was, it was thought that we should get another five or six years out of the garage, maybe seven or longer. But we must work on a long-term solution to the planning of, of the demise of that, of that parking deck. But right now, we simply do not have the resources, all cobbled together, to replace that garage. I believe I gave you an expectation of about $24,000 or $25,000 a parking spot, times 600. And the, the ability to pay for that right now simply is not there. But also the ability to duplicate 600 parking spots on surface parking is very limited in the downtown area also. The current parking deck holds about 425 vehicles, I've indicated to you, with growth in the county. And the way our parking situation is now, we need 600-plus spots if you're going to properly plan for the garage. You don't want it to be full the day it's open. Realistically, we probably need closer to 700 so we can go back to a mixed-use facility. So 700 times 25,000 a spot. So there's some, there's a lot of challenges there. Those challenges are going to have to be solved in, in the years to come, but presently, we, we need to deal with what the reality of that we don't have the whole part of the upper deck. We're going to be closing part of the second deck and to do this work. But I don't want to just complete this work and then five years from now, I'll be back in the same flytrap that we're in today. The third thing is, I would ask that we, we, I don't know how to change resolution, increase this borrowing, maybe another million dollars. I have been in consultation with our folks at the jail with regard to the video security system. I think Commissioner, you've just recently been out there. Last year, we put a lot of money into the, to the locks, to redo all those locks. That was about $500,000. And the locks weren't working. You know, people could not safely be moved around. And I will say that, that while I haven't been out there in some time to look at it, I've gotten the reports and I've seen depictions and videos of how poor the surveillance system is out there and what they're having to deal with. It's a very, in my mind, it's a very unsafe environment and it needs correcting. And to correct that, we need about $700,000. That's an initial look. I, I, we'll have more for you soon on that. I just know we're going to this borrowing now. I really don't want to go back to the markets again. In three or four, five weeks, it just agitates the rating agencies. Why didn't you know it four weeks ago? It doesn't make us look like we're planning properly. But I only got that number yesterday from the jail. I will tell you, I was a little stunned, a little taken back. I don't think there's any proof for it, and I know they've been working real hard. I respect the work they do out there. But we don't actually have to move forward on the project. I just want to make sure that availability of funds is there, should you decide you want to do that. And the cost of issuances won't change much with another million dollars of capital notes. Recognize, these are not, pardon, I said notes. Right, notes. These are not bonds. They're notes. They're anticipation notes for capital projects. So the carrying costs is, is kind of low on those right now compared to long-term financing. And budget direction, I don't know if she wants to add anything to that. There's a little surprise for you this morning. I haven't talked to you on that either. The, so I don't know how to modify this resolution.
I would, if it's okay, I mean, approve these two separate, then Number 12 would be issuance of not to exceed 1 million for the jail, blah, blah, blah.
I just want, right.
And then the fourth would be consolidate three bond anticipation notes.
Good. It's, it's new money. I know I gave you a number less than a million, but better we get a little more and the carrying costs is significant, then we come up short. And then we'll talk more about the project in the next couple of weeks and decide which way you want to go. Recognizing is, that there's, there's a long way from here to there, but what we're looking at is, is national state pricing that we can piggyback on so we don't have to do a long and lengthy spec-out and, and sealed bid process. Because we're allowed to use those things that have been on state term or national term. So that'll shorten the, the overall timeframe to get this accomplished if you want to go forward.
And I did see that system. It's grainy, it's, it malfunctions, a lot of the zones. It, it needs work.
And we were shocked when we heard it was going to be half a million dollars for the locks.
Right.
In the facility. And, and I, I saw that security system many years ago, and it was pretty bad then. And so it's only worse today. But this is just another reality, what we deal with in government. I know there are some people who say government, you know, you don't need any more money and you operate with what you got and, but the reality is that we get absolutely no credit when something finally wears out after 15, 20 years. You know, we try to stretch these things as long as possible, and I mean, look at this with the garage. That's probably the, one of the most frustrating things that Jim knows. I don't like to deal with this garage, it's so frustrating. But, but the reality is that, you know, we, we get no credit when we stretch things out and probably sometimes, shame on us for stretching it out so long. Maybe we should look at doing some of the improvements sooner than later because eventually you got to pay. And when you do have to pay, you generally end up paying more. But, but the reality is, things have to be fixed, just like, you know, your roof only lasts so long and other things with your home need to be replaced after a period of time. So we try to manage things the best we can, but these are your buildings, your facilities, your correctional facility. And, you know, I always say, one of the toughest jobs in public service is being a corrections officer. And I, I can't stress enough the importance of making sure that it's a safe environment for those corrections officers. And, you know, a safe environment for, for inmates who are in there who aren't stirring up any trouble, but maybe somebody else is. So it's important that these things get done, but boy, when the bill comes due, it is just so expensive. This is another example, then.
It's remembering, just for those folks that are not that well-versed as we are, we're required to provide that jail. We are required to house inmates. It's not optional. It's not discretionary. If they're ordered into confinement, we're required to confine them and/or pay to have them confined someplace else. So we don't, you don't have many options here. And, and then the other elephant, you know, attempting to hide under the carpet is eventually we have to have the conversation about the jail and how old it is and what we can do there. We've been working with, with those folks. And, you know, we just replaced a whole bunch of shallow walls that you could have walked through out there from the, you know, the deterioration of the, the concrete and other things. The last major renovation on the jail occurred in the mid-'90s. That was, we can do the math here. And, and that increased the capacity and renovated all the portions of that jail from the original build. But there's going to need to be a longer-term solution, and our plight is not unique. The state of local jails in Ohio in general, except outside those huge communities with a bigger tax base, is, is massive. And so the other concern is, I still haven't gotten the answer to the T cap funding issue, whether the state's going to extend that T cap. A lot of people don't remember, it wasn't too long ago, the state stopped taking our F5s. So we either have to divert them or house them ourselves. And we did receive funding to do that for a while, but I really haven't been clued in on whether they're going to continue that T cap funding past this, the end of this state fiscal year. And we may be huffing on our own here with the ability to pay for that diversion and/or house those people that are adjudicated on, on F5s. There's, you know, there's a couple scenarios. I see a lot of, a lot less ability to plead down and maybe give somebody an opportunity at, at a chance to do better without having a higher sentencing requirement, simply because you're going to have to deal with a category where local resources are going to be scarce to handle that type of, of issue. So that's coming too. Everything's always coming to you guys. I'm always the bearer of, of good news. I love it.
We've already done a lot of diversion through the recovery court and Judge Walther's Veterans Treatment Court. So, you know, this T cap, it's good, but we've already done a lot of that already, so...
True enough, but we, we don't, we lack the option with the F5s though, and, and the money we received for some of this diversion and, and some, a good part of the drug cost is being paid for with, with T cap funds. So we have to find new resources and as we move forward and/or figure out how to redirect some of the resources we have now. I'm hopeful, there's been a, you know, the new administration in Columbus seems to have a more open mind with addiction services and incarceration, and so there may be some initiatives that come out of that that'll help us here, but we have to wait.
They're also talking about matching dollars to rebuild jails in Ohio. They realize that the, all the infrastructure is getting older, so they're matching, I think they're going to match money on rebuilding jails.
And that's something we've, we've talked about. We need to be prepared for that. So last look, a few years ago, that we needed about 60 to 65 million dollars for, for a new jail.
And it's a manpower issue, the way our jail is chopped up too. So if you have a, a new jail, there's also less manpower needed for the way you can see...
Efficiencies.
Efficiency.
There is efficiencies in the pod structure and the way they, they house and separate that, that, you know, a new, new thinking and technology has improved. But if you build a new jail, you're, you're going to build and increase capacity to the future. So that, that, while you get more efficiency, you may not see a reduction in staffing. In fact, it may be a slight increase in the staffings. You know, I, the last thing you want to be is in the situation Cuyahoga County was 25 years ago, where they, they built this really, really nice new jail, and then they couldn't open it because they couldn't afford to operate it. So, you know, I don't think we need a lesson to learn, and I don't think that would have happened to us, but, but it did happen to them. And, and, you know, you got to be keenly aware that brick and mortar is one thing, operation costs are another thing. So a lot of things coming up in the future that need to be, we need to be taken into consideration to advance the community. We're not unique, and it's not because, you know, the, the Board hasn't done its job here. Communities are aging in their infrastructure and there's, there's continued need, and we're growing. And, and we're going to continue to grow. All you're going to do is look, all the housing starts over in Columbia Township, North Ridgeville, Avon, you know, it, our community's going to continue to expand. And with that expansion, we're going to overrun the, the services that were put into place 25, 30, 40 years ago.
Our main job is the budget, but we're also in charge of civility and keeping civil, really. I mean, the whole justice system is what we do here, so...
Well, and what I was able to witness is during peak times of incarceration, when the numbers are up, they have their, their fiberglass boats, they call them, that are just edge-to-edge filled with, with individuals and no how, no bedding, no, no space, and that is a climate for disaster as well, when you have that overpopulation. So they, they do the best they can with the space they have.
Yep.
Okay. So, let's, well, we're going to, I'm going to make a, we'll call on the first one, number 10.
Right.
So, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
And then the next one is issuance of not to exceed 1,580,000 parking deck construction bond anticipation note, Series 2018B, for purpose of paying cost of constructing and inquiring improvements for a park deck at an administration building, together with all necessary appetites thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
And then the next one, I'm assuming is going to be, say, pretty much the same issue, thing, is issuance of not to exceed 1 million for the jail and blah, 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 blah. We'll figure that out with the bond people.
I want to see how you write that in a minute.
Yeah. For some acquiring improvements for said jail and appetites thereto of...
I'd take it any way it comes.
Yeah, we'll get it after this, but...
Is that proper wording, Counsel?
Blah, blah, blah. Would you like to make the motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Well, second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
And then we'll consolidate the three bond anticipation notes above and establish terms of such consolidated issues.
Okay. So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
All right. Under sanitary, interned in Denim Number One, sanitary sewer service agreement, Lorco for Hawk Road.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
And then the next one, I'm assuming is going to be, say, pretty much the same issue, thing, is issuance of not to exceed 1 million for the jail and blah, 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 blah. We'll figure that out with the bond people.
I want to see how you write that in a minute.
Yeah. For some acquiring improvements for said jail and appetites thereto of...
I'd take it any way it comes.
Yeah, we'll get it after this, but...
Is that proper wording, Counsel?
Blah, blah, blah. Would you like to make the motion, Commissioner?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Well, second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
And then we'll consolidate the three bond anticipation notes above and establish terms of such consolidated issues.
Okay. So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
All right. Under sanitary, interned in Denim Number One, sanitary sewer service agreement, Lorco for Hawk Road.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
All right. Under sanitary, interned in Denim Number One, sanitary sewer service agreement, Lorco for Hawk Road.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
All right. Under sanitary, interned in Denim Number One, sanitary sewer service agreement, Lorco for Hawk Road.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Could you want to talk about that change at all?
Yes, please.
Under our agreement with Lorco, there hasn't been a, a huge amount of homes requesting to move from the, our management area to the Lorco. Several years ago, they put the sewer down Hawk Road, which most people that travel there probably don't know, divides Eaton Township and, and Columbia Township. Pretty much the demarcation line's right in the middle of the road. That makes for ease of services, so they usually do pick roads if they can to where they, they put boundaries. The, the people on the west side of Hawk Road are serviced by Lorco with a forced main low-pressure system, and the people on the west side were in a different service area who did not have access to that sewer, nor did Columbia Township, nor was Columbia Township in the Lorco service area. So a few, a few people indicated they may have wanted service, so after much back and forth, we, we did work out an arrangement with Lorco, they could service those people on an individual basis. And each time, we would make a facilities change and incorporate that parcel into the Lorco service area with the Avon Lake as a sub-designee because the service is actually coming out of Avon Lake. The, unfortunately, when we wrote the contract, the costs were, were a lot different, and it's, it's costing more to get the laterals under the road on Hawk Road and do the borings. We want borings rather than open cuts. If you can bore, it's, it's certainly a lot better for the road than all those open cuts you, and I was, I was driving...
Like freight trucks.
And I was driving down Bagley Road the other night, and they just put that road in, and now it's got like 12 different open cuts across it, and the road's brand-new. And like, you know, okay, look, maybe you didn't know about some of this work when the road went in, but bore under the road, don't cut through a brand-new road. It just deteriorates it that much more rapidly. So they are doing borings out there, and the road is not in that, that greater shape in certain sections, but other areas, they've just repaved in the last few years. But it's costing Lorco more, in a nutshell, than what we had agreed to in the contract. And that, and that cost should not be burdened onto them. Our arrangement was that if homeowners wanted that and solicited that, especially for new builds, that was their cost to get those laterals underneath there. So we just modified to allow them to recover their costs. And I'm not making any money on it, they're just recovering their costs, and I think it's a fair arrangement.
Yeah. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Workforce development, authorized MOU between the workforce development board and WDA. He serves the Ohio Means Job Comprehensive Career Center operator, retroacted to March 1st, 2019 through June 30, 2020, and has option to renew annually for up to three inch-to-one-year periods.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, would you like to talk about the difference between our workforce development and what the city of Alariah is doing with their Alaria Works? Um, Mr. Cortez, would you like to talk about the difference between our workforce development and what the city of Alaria is doing with their Alaria Works?
I don't know if there is much difference. You know, I I I I guess, you know, I recognize the city feels they they may need something, but we provide the same services over at Ohio Means Jobs, and we use federal funds to do so. We do try to align people with jobs. We we you were there last week. I think you were amazed at how large the place was, that we've been expanding. Veterans has moved out. We we've got a facility for them. They have their own home out on Abbey Road after forty years of being stuck in half Cubes in in a corner somewhere. So we've we've taken over that space, and you saw how large the job and family service space was that they retreated from some years ago that we moved workforce development and about our twelve partners out there under the MOU into. And of course, the all the labs, workshops, training rooms that are ongoing. But we do work with employers. We we are in the ACT Keys Program to evaluate jobs and match those with people that that have qualified for a gold key or a platinum key in skill levels. It doesn't denote whether you're better if you get a gold or a platinum, it just says you have this skill set over here and this skill set over there. Once those things are matched with job descriptions and evaluated, we usually can provide a group of individuals for the company to look at for possible employment that that possess the basic skills that they could be successful in that role with the company.
But the company has to get involved with Ohio Means Jobs.
They do.
So I wonder if these companies that Alaria is working with, are they also a part of Ohio Means Jobs?
They they could be, Commissioner. I I don't know specifically. You know, I never made it my purpose to interfere with what other people thought they needed to do. I wish we were doing it all through workforce development. That strengthens Ohio Means Jobs over on on.
Two fifty-four.
Two fifty-four. But 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 some people tend to want to do it on their own. We've seen this before with other organizations. We're still here, they're gone, and we're going to be here after these things come and go, too. The difference is we get outside funds. We bring back federal funds to the community, and those funds can be used for OJT's, they can be used for for training, they can be used to go to college if you're dislocated, they can be used for if you're under twenty-four for work assignments. We routinely do a lot of work assignments. I will tell you, I just signed for two youth work assignments, and we say, yes, let's recognizing in some aspects, you can be up to twenty-six years old under the youth program. Most most of you, though, most of the funds cut off about twenty-four. You know, the clerk of courts over in Lorraine's all over me for, you know, work experience people while they do new programming over there. Because why? Because Mr. Kalow is knows the program. He knows he can get people over there to help out with the chores and duties of change that he wants, and it doesn't cost them any money, and it gives these people a workplace to be in. The key is getting them there, and then the the collaboration, since we pay them with federal funds, we pay for them to be there, is that they they teach soft skills to these folks when they're there. They teach them how to be get there on time, how to how to properly prepare themselves for future in a in a work environment, a workplace. And and a lot of times that works out good, especially since we're dealing with a lot of at-risk populations. So is it is it different? Not really. If maybe what they're doing, a little bit more concentrated, possibly, but but we're able to provide the same services. And you and I were out, and we talked about a little bit about the workforce development and careers and over in Avon with Avon Lake and Avon and Sheffield Village and the Avon Mayor and some of those staffers with regards to they have job opportunities there. A lot of them are entry level or a little bit slightly higher than entry level, and they they cannot get workers to those job sites. Especially with the the new retail that's opening up along the Route Two corridor, and we had considerable conversations of how to get those employers properly hooked with 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 a ready workforce that may be able to fill those jobs. We all know what one of the big barriers are, and that's transportation. We we know that's there, but but some of the other barriers we could we could certainly work on and provide them a pool of what we consider candidates that will be able to to do the job and do it well if they go to work and stay at work and get transportation and so forth. That's a little bit of a long answer to a short question, but but I'm not going to fly forward with anybody that's trying to do something to improve their workforce, but I just wish we were doing it together.
Um, speaking of transportation, I was talking to Tony Gallo yesterday at our event, and he was talking about Go Ohio through Noaka, G in front of Ohio, for ride sharing opportunities. So I guess Grace Galucci is going to be at the elected officials event that we'll be at, and she's going to her and her staff are going to talk about that, so I'm pretty interested in hearing about that.
We've had considerable conversation, and one of the things we brought up with with the meeting that we were at was that that while we may not have transit service into the eastern side of Lorraine County, we certainly need to look for park and ride opportunities, and we need to look for van sharing, van pooling and and ride sharing. There's one really small lot that's on the.
Eighty-three.
Yeah, that connector. I just don't understand how that all works over there, but they put and and the mayor indicated to me strongly that's going to go away. It's just it's it's it was a thank you for thinking of having to pull off there, but it just didn't fit in that small area. But but we need a larger look at where people can go to the eastern side of the county, park in a secure facility, and then finish their commute as a group, going going further east for employment opportunity. Over fifty percent of the Lorraine County residents leave Lorraine County for employment opportunities on a daily basis. We we while we can't presently transport a lot of those folks, we can certainly make it a little easier for them to work together to transport each other. And and there is money for those things that that we we can accomplish. We just have to do our work and do the justification. About five years, eight years ago, we looked in earnest for a piece of land along Route Two in the eastern suburbs to put in just that facility when there was a boatload of money available during stimulus funds and so forth. Because the land has become so valued, we couldn't find anything that was in a in an area where it wasn't going to be more congestion, and nobody wanted to release the land for that in a reasonable dollar amount to put that in. But that doesn't mean the problem went away. The problem still exists. All you have to do is go to the park and ride in Westlake on the service road there and see how packed that is and how many Lorraine County vehicles are there on one seventeen or down right off the off of by Great Northern Mall there on the other side of, is that Columbia, Columbia Road there, or is that Great Great Northern Road? The the there half the lot's full of people that, you know, have that little number that used to have it, and I think they've changed it, but back when we did those surveys, were Lorraine County vehicles. So if we get something a little closer where they can join together, maybe make a link between, you know, a link service between our TA and our park and ride, which is a short run. We maybe will get a lot more yardage out of what we're doing. But but your your question was, it's very similar to what we're doing, but if they feel it's needed, I guess they feel it's needed.
Okay.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
amend resolution seventeen two forty-two adopted April twelfth, two thousand seventeen, approving the now regional and workforce area number four local plan as required under the Workforce Opportunity Innovation Act. Set amendments to reflect administrative and programmatic changes that have taken place as required.
So move.
Second.
For just for some information, if you remember, a few years ago, the state made a huge push to consolidate workforce areas. And in fact, they they wanted to consolidate them into the economic development areas that they identified throughout the state that I think there's about seven or eight of them. I don't recall right off the top of my head. But they wanted to take all within those regions, they wanted to take all of the local WDA boards, local workforce investment boards. The I always call everything WDA, but it has a it's more the WEOLR, and consolidate them into one massive board for the region. Well, that may work in some areas. I I know that I think it's Area Seven, the workforce area seven is a gerramended district that goes way down, and there's there's probably ten or twelve smaller communities in that, and it seems to work for them. But with us, being next to Cuyahoga County, we would have lost any kind of existence and any kind of control over what best meets the needs of Lorraine County. Cuyahoga is is so large, and their problems are unique on the Cuyahoga, and they're somewhat different than the challenges we face here. We did not believe that was going to be in the best interest. And in fact, when it looked like we would not be able to stay independent, we reached out to Medina and Lake County in an effort to possibly merge with, because we felt the flavor of the that the issues in their community were more aligned with with Lorraine County. Subsequent to all of the state's push on that, the even they didn't want to give up, but the federal government had made it available in the regulations for existing workforce development boards to stay in business if they entered into a consolidated plan for a region. So we all worked in northeast Ohio on a plan of how to work together. And and a silly example is how to have the same form in Lake County for an employer to use to act for services as you had in Lorraine County. Believe it or not, up until that point, you these companies that were across county lines could encounter six different forms for the same for the same thing. So we were able to get some efficiencies that way, get our a regional plan approved in all the areas and get it approved by the federal government so that we could maintain maintain individual boards to have that local flavor and local concern while still sharing efficiencies where we could for employers to access the system. And this is just an update to that plan, and it's been working well, and I still believe it's in the best interest of Lorraine County to have a workforce development board looking at Lorraine County.
Absolutely.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Clerk of Courts, Count, please amend resolution nineteen sixty-seven adopted February sixth, two thousand nineteen, approving Pioneer Technology Group case management system and contract in the amount of one million two hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Amendment is to reflect the approval of the case management system being purchased from Pioneer Technology Group as well as various vendors in the amount of one million two hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Engineer approval and internal contrast singus construction Lagrange in the amount of fifty thousand seven hundred for Griggs Road and Clark Road Drainage Improvement Project in Huntington Township. Six bids were received on March eighth, as being the most responsive complying with specifications. Stormwater District will provide a grant to the township in the amount of thirty-one thousand six hundred. Remaining balance will be paid from the MVG engineer account. Issue notice proceed on before April first and complete by June first. Authorized administrative notify the auditor debris leaves to retain and check completion of project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Approval and internal roadway improvement agreement with Kay Havana Four Seasons at Chestnut Ridge LLC for oversight of construction plans to develop and improve section of the Chestnut Ridge Road and entrance of proposed subdivision within the city of Alaria. Engineer estimates construction will be two hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Developer shall deposit thirteen thousand for testing and inspection fees and twenty-six thousand construction costs and furniture for liability insurance.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Expect and generalize the two thousand and eighteen report on bridges.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize five-year lease purchase with Harrison Ford Wellington and Kansas State Bank in the metal one hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and ten cents for six pickup trucks, two Ford F three fifty crew cab four by four, two Ford F three fifty crew cab four by two, one Ford F three fifty crew chassis four by four, one Ford F three fifty crew cab four by four with dump body to be paid from the MGVP account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
So glad to see it's a local dealership.
You know, impossible. They do try very, very hard.
But there's state purchasing and everything else that goes on with this.
And it's a lease purchase, which is nice, not just a lease.
Yeah, and and I will tell you that we have exploited lease purchases in other areas much as we can, especially under under federal grants. A lot of times you the federal grants allow for procurement of vehicles that you can either, mostly you have to lease them because the grant's not long enough to really justify a complete capital purchase. But what we do is, at the end of the lease, because the vehicles get sometimes get very limited use under those federal lease programs, we buy them out from the county so that we get an upgrade to our our rolling stock at at about forty cents on the dollar. And we get a mostly newer vehicle. So we do work that through the federal grants and do make sure that we stay within the guidelines, but that we're producing additional value and leverage for the county.
Great. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to make public comment to the board, please? Just give us your full name and where you live and for the record.
Do I got to turn this on?
No, it's on.
No, it's on.
This is a first, so I'm kind of nervous, so just bear with me. I'm Lea Naroyo. I'm the fifth ward candidate for Alaria City Council. I live at two forty-seven Massachusetts Avenue, which is in Colonial Oaks. One of the things that I would like to discuss is that vehicle repair program that Job and Family Services has. I did find out that they do that for people that are employed and have children in the home, but that does tend to leave out elderly and disabled people that still have vehicles. I've talked to a few elderly within my ward that would like to know if they can get included in that program or not, because with elderly people, they tend to not like strangers coming to their door to pick them up because of society nowadays, and they still want to feel independent, and that partially takes their independence away from them to be able to stay in their home and, you know, maintain their own life. So they should be included in getting their vehicles fixed, as well as like people that have shared parenting. They may not have the children in the home, and if they are employed, they still need to get to work to pay child support for that child. So those avenues need to get looked at to include them for the vehicle repair program. And another topic is the dog adoption is there is a small business in my ward that is offering to do dog tags for free for pets that get adopted locally instead of being purchased. I have flyers for all of you. And and another issue that was brought up to me is if there is any possible way that you guys can start broadcasting on satellite TV, not just cable, because a lot of people cannot afford the current cable rates, and they're cutting the cord and going to satellite. And people that live in apartment complexes and like in my case of Colonial Oaks, you cable companies are contracted out, which means part of your bill goes back to the management company, and management companies do tend to hike up the prices to get more of this, and it straps people to dead end. Saying satellite companies are more popular than cable now, so I didn't know if you guys could expand your broadcasting to satellite. Because they're right now in my trailer park alone, it's seventy-five percent satellite and only maybe fifteen percent cable, other than people that watch on their phones. So that's one reason why Facebook Live all the meetings, so people can sit on the internet if they have Wi-Fi, which is free for some people. So just a few things that you should guys should think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jeff. Morning. You know the drill.
Pardon?
I said, you know the drill, right?
I do. I'm Jeff Baxter, one sixty Burns Road, Alaria, Ohio, and I'm an Alaria City Council at-large candidate this year. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Alaria Works Program. I'm a pro-coach with that program. I do classroom instruction as well. I do individual counseling, intakes. I do anything that's needed for that. And I think there's enough room in Lorraine County for the Ohio Jobs Works Program and Alaria's Alaria Works now. I don't know that much about the county program, but I can tell you that in Alaria, I think the real impetus for it came from the Alaria businesses. They were looking for more people, and they had casual conversation, I'm sure, with Mayor Brenda, and eventually that gestated into what we have today. We are finishing our pilot program right now, and I don't know the future of it, but I can tell you that having been a part of it, I know that we have worked with lots of people and made, I believe, improvements in how they live their lives and and what they do for a living. And for that, I'm grateful, and I hope that we could all make sure that there's things that, if they can be discussed, communication is key, that there could be some synergies between the two programs if it goes forward. I think that there's opportunity for people to to make improvements in that. The other thing that I think I've noticed in this program is with the individuals is that not everybody gets it the first time around. You know, with a a lot of the people that are in a workforce, a lack of a work situation, they're really stressed. They have a lot of stress in their lives, and they they get confused on how to handle things. Maybe they've made bad decisions in the past that have bitten them in the hind end, so to speak. But it's it's something that they have to do it again and again and maybe again. And for me, I kind of look at it as a is it maybe kind of an addiction of sorts? I don't know. But I wanted to share those thoughts with you this morning. Thank you.
Thanks for your participation in that, Jeff.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It was a very special day, and not just because it's the beginning of spring. Although it is it is nice that it's it's happening, and I'm sure the weather's going to change, and we'll all be regretting all the yard work we have to do soon, but right now it's warming up. But I'm really pleased. Today was our first day at the new nine-one-one facility. I was out there last night. After we left our event, I went over to the new building, and we had hands-on out there. We were, you know, retesting and finishing up, and I was pleased. A lot of our outside help was there. Century Tel was there. We're just going through, making last-minute tweaks and doing our best to have a very seamless transition. I'm very proud of the team there. I'm very proud of not just the managers, but the dispatchers. I will tell you, they started transferring the calls over at eight o'clock this morning. Everybody arrived at seven. The calls started going over at eight. I had to be here to do my duty here, but I don't usually have my cellphone with me, but it's sitting here. I haven't gotten any calls, which is a very pleasing thing. It's it's been a very, very difficult road with this technology, especially how it aligns with the older systems that are the backbone from other service providers. But but we're there. We'll be hard hard testing that all day. We'll be maintaining staff at both stations until we get a comfort factor and then slowly wean off our old primary, and our old primary will receive some facelifting of, not huge, but some facelifting, and it'll become our our backup center. It's been a long slug. Taxpayers have been supportive. They've supported levies. They've supported slight increases in those levies to do this. I I simply can't wait until the weather's warm enough, probably sometime in May, to start having an open house events to let the public come through in small groups while we operate. So it's going to be small groups because we're actually going to be working, but I believe they they have a need to be in there and take a look at what's going on and see see what they've supported these many years. And we'll also tell you that this 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 summer is is year thirty since nine-one-one first got a breath of air in Lorraine County. So we're going to try to align those things. I go back to the Herb Jacoby days. I think Madam Clerk does, too, when when Herb was a driving force, rest his soul. Behind getting a nine-one-one system in Lorraine County. Everybody picks up nine-one-one, especially the younger generations, and it's been there their whole life. It wasn't there our whole life. You had the magnets on the refrigerator for the fire department, the police department, the EMA, and we didn't call it EMA then. It was the ambulance service. That's when when hospitals still ran ambulances out of the hospitals and so forth. And and just to let you know how well Lorraine County's done in these areas, only in the last few years has some of the rural communities, especially in Appalachia, even begun to talk about having a nine-one-one. They still were in that era of the local call. That's why the state made a push with to their with to service, uh, safety services to start making sure that these communities had a nine-one-one and to incorporate that. We've come a long way. We used to get, when they first started, we used to get almost a hundred percent of the calls from landlines. Today, we get eighty-five percent of our calls from wireless. And we've had to upgrade and follow that technology or and or be prepared for the future of that technology for a long time. I'm hopeful that within the next couple of days that we'll have the text feature up and running. Really couldn't do much with that until we were up and running there. That'll allow people to text to nine-one-one and us to text back. If somebody is in a a dangerous situation and they're texting, the last thing you want to do is try to ring their phone back. That doesn't really do much, much good. So now we'll be able to take that task, text, and and our dispatchers will be able to text back and and try to render assistance and and figure out what's going on that way. Also, the GPS mapping, we'll be able to find somebody in the corner of a building, back of a house. It won't always be that close, but but when it's when when we're able to triangle it, we'll be able to get so much closer than where we were before with with the new equipment. And of course, all of our GIS overlays that that are supporting that have been upgraded. You were down there. You saw all the the big boards. We we know where all the safety forces are. We know where all the resources are. We got the maps. We got I love the the one that's telling us how many phone, how many people are in the queue and how fast we're answering that call. And of course, with the new quality assurance program that we put into place two years ago, we were actually timing that call to a resource and making sure that it gets out there. On average, on average, because some calls are a little bit more difficult than others, but on average, we're we're less than a minute from when the call gets answered, which we try to answer within the first five to seven seconds. And to give you an idea, that's really one or two rings at best. And and then to move that call to where it needs to be and start start a resource towards that problem while we're still connected with the caller and collecting additional data. We can always use improvement, but but I We can always use improvement, but but I will tell you that that when I get emails from folks like today, I got this from Joe Paneski, uh, over in Elyria, and you know, uh, Joe has been one of our biggest critics, but one of our biggest fans. I really like Joe. He calls it as it is. Uh, he says, I just wanted to wish you, Tracy and the county dispatchers, good luck and congrats as you move into your new home today. As I've said before, you have a top-notch, you have top-notch leaders in Tracy, Russ and Mike, and they have been outstanding to work with and are a true asset to the counties and to the citizens of Lorraine County. So, uh, we have received others. I just happen to have that one with me. We've come a long way and in the last couple of years and I'm I'm hopeful that we're gonna continue to evolve.
I just want to thank you for all the time that you've put into this. I'm surprised you still have a full head of hair after it's over with, but you know, anytime you get into technology and new technology, there's always lots of things to work through and, you know, I gotta tell you, being a county administrator, folks, uh, is is a tough job. There's a reason why this guy's still here at seven o'clock at night or eight o'clock at night. But I I just can't thank you enough because there was a lot of, uh, you know, logistical things we had to work through, whether it was with the phone companies or with the technology itself, which a lot of people, you know, uh, don't realize, all the work that really went into this, but uh, yeah, just can't thank you enough. We're glad you're still living and breathing and didn't have a heart attack over this thing, but you definitely, definitely got it done and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We can handle the call if you get a heart attack, though.
Yes, but I don't know if anybody wants to give me CPR.
Well, one thing I'd like to add is, um, we don't sometime, we often take for granted, uh, the nine-one-one system and how well it works. But out in Huron County, just this last summer, they were still navigating through a method of supplying nine-one-one service, how they were going to to bill for it, whether they were going to use mileage and some of their response times were in the twenty to thirty-minute range. So we are, we are really fortunate and I thank you for that work as well.
Thank you. The the, but it's a team. It's a big team, uh, that includes our IT department, Eric Smith's people. He he grunts and snorts and speaks IT and I don't understand what he's saying sometimes. But but we we we've been able to pull it together. I'd also like to to say that that our first responders out there are amazing people in Lorraine County. I I've worked with the police chiefs and the fire chiefs more closely in the last few years and we fostered a relationship that that I would say five years ago, we didn't think was possible. It all started with the New World and the leadership of this board and providing the resources and looking past boundaries and 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 the argument of who was gonna get what, who should be paying for what and what system. It wasn't that long ago that there was three or four different systems for the for the police and they weren't, the systems weren't talking to each other. It was chaotic. You know, we've had a lot of initiatives in the last five years and the taxpayers have supported those initiatives through the nine-one-one levy and they increased it the last time by a seventy-six to twenty-four margin. The best results in levies in Lorraine County. So we gotta continue to provide those services. I have the new initiative with regard to the radios and the Mark system and all the problems that they're experiencing radio traffic. I do have that report now from the consultants. It's a little bit amazing, some of the, some of the things in there. Uh, and some of the things that maybe we can participate jointly as a community on. Because the ability to do these things individually any, does not exist anymore. And we knew that with the new, with New World software. We we have millions in that, but it's working and it's bringing people together and it's bringing all the communities together and all the safety force together to use all of the platforms. So without the leadership of the board, but also without the resources from the community, from the taxpayers.
Very much.
We wouldn't be able to do this. Uh, and and so I I'm just so proud of all of us and 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 the residents of Lorraine County for everything we've done here and the ability to participate. So I'm gonna close with that and yield to council. Uh, thank you very much.
I just wanna say, Mr. Cortez knows how to build buildings and and renovate things, but when it comes to technology, that's when you have to rely on other people. So the building's been done for quite a long time. It was the technology that had to catch up with the building. And, you know, it was just amazing how we all worked together and we, everybody was patient, um, we got it done. So I'm very proud of our nine-one-one, uh, department, everybody involved in getting it to to where it is today. So just wanna congratulate you on sticking it out because we had, uh, equipment that if it failed, the old equipment, there is no, nothing to replace it. So we got this done in time before something terrible could have happened. So thank God for that. We're we're a safer community because of it.
Mr. Ennis.
I just have one matter of pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session.
Uh, well, Thursday morning, Commissioner Sweet and I attended the State of the City for Wellington's address and they also did a State of the Schools forum at the same time. It was really interesting that the students in Wellington are are required to participate in at least one extracurricular activity and it substantially increases their student academic success.
Achievement, yes.
What was the percentage? It was a big percent.
It was huge. It's proven that a a student who is engaged in some form, any form, and and his his words were, join a club, join a group, do a sport. It it's, it, um, just significantly enhances and creates a far better outcome of that student and the student is a healthier student for it.
Right, yeah. So all those people with the pay-to-play might wanna rethink doing that and making sure that all students are able, regardless of financial ability, to, uh, participate in extracurricular activities. Uh, well, after Wellington, I went down to Columbus for the CCAO's General Government and Operations Committee meeting. One of the things that I found out was that for the Board of Elections, we can reduce the amount of poll workers if we use the poll books, which we do. And and they have multiple precincts at one location, you can reduce the amount of poll workers that we need to do that. So I thought that was pretty interesting. I had not known that. And also, uh, daycare centers are going to have to have a minimum standard. Do you know about this, Mr. Cortez? For Job and Family Services, they have to be rated and they have to have at least one star or they will not be able to get any funding through Job and Family Services. So, and that's gonna happen in twenty-twenty. So a lot of these, uh, daycare centers are gonna have to, you know, make sure that they have certain guidelines that they gotta follow or they're not gonna get any funding.
Our administrators over at Job and Family Services are are in front of the changes. There's a lot of changes coming down with regard to that. And also with regard to background checks and the the likes of all of that to BCI. That's another team you met with, um, last week. We met with the management team. Uh, I thought it was a really great meeting. The the, so, uh, while I would say I believe they're in front of that, I'll just check with them anyway, just to kinda make sure.
Then we had, uh, Dan McCarthy. He's the Legislative Director for Govern- Governor Dewine and he was an Oberlin College graduate. And he looks like he could be related to you guys. You know him?
The Dan Zinloks guy.
Do you see resemblance between the two of you a little bit? I come look at him like, man, he looks just like Matt. So let's see, what else did I do here? Um, then Friday, I went back down to CCAO for the Board of Directors meeting. Uh, we had House Representative Jay Edwards from the ninety-fourth district to discuss state and county partnerships. And then later in the day, we had Lieutenant Governor John Houston at our meeting to talk about the state budget. Uh, CCAO asked that the state of, uh, to be one hundred percent responsible for the indigent attorney fees. Unfortunately, the ninety million dollar ask was dropped down to sixty million, which I guess we could be grateful for that. They are increasing it, but I was hoping for for a hundred percent of that. Ninety million dollars was appropriated for children's services and I'm not really sure how that affects us since we have a levy in some area, some, uh, counties don't have levy, uh, for their children's services. Uh, eight million to Drug Task Force, which out of eighty-eight counties, I don't think that's gonna go very far. What else we got here? I'm happy to announce that the Ohio Pet Fund has approved a two thousand dollar grant for our kennel to provide spay neuter. So thank you for whoever put in for that grant. I'm sure it must have been our dog warden, Tim Pillblad. So thank you for that. Next, actually tomorrow starts Restaurant Week, our third Restaurant Week. It's amazing.
Well, we should talk about that.
We should. Uh, we had, first of all, we had our member reception yesterday, uh, for, uh, dialogue and we had, how many people would you say attended?
About sixty-five.
Sixty-five? Well, I thought it went really well. Um, I was, everybody seemed very happy with what we're doing. Uh, we tried to get some ideas, what we could do better. One of the things we talked about Restaurant Week and anything that's going on with our businesses in Lorraine County is to always say free parking because Cuyahoga County, you don't get that in Cuyahoga County. We, you know, it's a savings. Might be, you know, kind of a small savings, but it's definitely a savings. So, um, really happy that, uh, we were able to put on a little reception and have some dialogue with our members from Visit Lorraine County. Do you wanna talk about Restaurant Week?
That and I don't wanna steal the Commissioner's thunder, but you all, Matt, Mr. Commissioner Lundey was ill last night. I was unable to attend. Um, the, uh, but we, we certainly had a lot of give and take with with the, uh, some of the members. A lot, a lot of them couldn't be there. They're small entrepreneurs. They were out running their businesses and, you know, taking care of the business of business. It was, I liked the few little B two Bs that were going on last, last night. It was kinda interesting how some people made it up on some common causes they could work together on during the discussion portion of our presentation. The the, uh, we did take, we did have somebody taking notes during that conversation so we can summarize a few of the issues that maybe uh, we can work on and and bring something back. I would like to maybe have another event, and I say maybe, it depends on how things are going in the fall and then talk about those issues that came up. Generally, I think I only annoyed one person there. That's usually, that's a record for me. I I was a little overwhelmed by the positive comments coming, coming out of the group. And and the lack of really, any lack of criticism because we were open to to, uh, what they wanted to say there. And and the people who love our new visitor's guide, it's amazing, uh, what they think.
Well, he's, the one guy from the airport who flies everywhere and sees all kinds of visitors' guides said ours is by far the best visitor's guide he's ever seen.
For those who haven't seen it, it has a cover of the courthouse at night with the light shining on it. It's really a beautiful cover and a good and a solid book, full of content.
And and, uh, I had to work against our consultant on that. I I just think we've, we've rung the chamois too hard on the lighthouse. Uh, it's, it's, it's always been a feature for the most part, one form or another, on the cover. And and it's a great resource and I, and I love it. And I've been out there for the the boat and dines and but but we need to give a little redirection, a little freshening. And I think our cover should move each year so it doesn't look the same sitting in the rack. Uh, I do like the 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 area, maybe a a small supplement with with coupons for services in Lorraine County. Once again, our consultants have been pushing back on that. They don't think there's a need for it and I believe there is. I use those visitor's guys where I go. And if it happens to be a few coupons for ten percent off here or fifteen percent off there, it does get my attention. So we're gonna continue to evolve, uh, and continue to build upon that momentum. And and Lorraine County is starting to, you know, get recognized. We had reaches from Columbus from the news media, unsolicited by us, about Armati Grau, what's going on in Lorraine County. We use that to capitalize upon Restaurant Week. Some of the folks with the hotels, you know, they're a little concerned that when they're not getting, they're not getting heads in beds from these events and they're a little discouraged. But it's, but it's really hard to have people come here for different things and and stay here, even if they're coming from outside the community. And right now, I I, we're not really able to draw from much more than outside the surrounding areas, the contiguous areas. Matt, you were gonna say something?
No, I was just gonna say, I think, you know, we talk about this all the time. It's not everybody's going to come in and and book to stay in a hotel for the night. The important thing is they come in the community, they look around, they have a positive experience and then they think about, let's go back next time and make a day of it and stay the night.
Sure. And and as we explained, we're two and a half years into this. We're having our third Restaurant Week. And and things have improved, I believe, exponentially and they will continue to improve. But it takes, it takes the members, creating the opportunity for us to utilize that, to get the word out. We can do the advertising. We can do the media pieces and that's what we've been doing on their behalf. Uh, but they gotta create the want here with what they're doing. And and so I I I'm excited. I'm hopeful this'll be a big Restaurant Week for us again. We, and we're looking for something to fill the void after, after the wing event and and later in the spring. We usually have a low in the summertime, but we're gonna work very, very hard on our Best of Lorraine County again this year. Excuse me, to try to bring that number up, uh, before we get consumed in the Best of the West and we become a footnote in the Best of the West. No disrespect. They do a great job in the Best of the West. I love it. I actually go out to the La Center there to it. But I don't want it to be the Best of the West and include the eastern side of Lorraine County and it disappears. So we need to, we need to continue to evolve the Best of Lorraine County through Pulse Magazine, our collaborations with with Great Lakes Publishing. With that, please come out to Restaurant Week. You can go to the Visit Bureau. Just Google Visit, Lorraine Visit Bureau. It'll come up. All the information's on the website. I don't need to give you the dot-dot. It'll just come up on the searches. We've improved our position with the search engines on Facebook. We we pay for a lot of that placement, uh, the calendar events there. Uh, there's some prizes if you visit a lot of restaurants. So I have a challenge for the board. Commissioner Kalo's gone and he's usually the one that eats the most food at these events. Uh, you know, during Burger Week, I think he went to nine different places in seven days to eat burgers. And he usually visits, you know, two, three, four restaurants. So, uh, I wanna know who's gonna get the prize this year for visiting the most facilities. So it's on you, uh, to, uh, to, uh, go back and prove Ted who. Somebody's gotta take the throne, gotta take, gotta, gotta rule. Uh, so.
So competitive. Darn it.
Well, if we don't, if we don't participate, why should anybody else?
Correct.
And and so, well, we we'll be out there. Please, please, uh, put it on your social media when you're there. Let people know you've been there. Please share Restaurant Week through any social media, any friends that you do. That's the piece that gets the word out the best. Uh, and and I'm looking forward to making a report to you guys in in two or three weeks that that, uh, that is, you know, exponentially better than what we did each year since inception. So, thank, thank you.
We have to believe in ourselves, you know? Like, I keep saying it, I said yesterday too. Down in New Orleans, they say, even if the tourists don't come, they would still have Mardi Gras because Mardi Gras is a state of mind. So we just have to have that state of mind. Lorraine County is that great place and it's a, you know, good place to have fun and eat and dine and so just, it's a state of mind.
If I can add on the B two B, um, situation last night and the fact of the hotels and the bed and breakfast. One of the things that evolved in small group conversation was the idea that that perhaps for a, um, a motel versus or a bed and breakfast versus our local eateries and our, our establishments that are are engaged to get higher foot traffic, that they could, they could go together to put packages together. So then they are offering not just a meal, but a meal with maybe a show and an overnight stay. And that may encourage more business to those, those, um, little more difficult venue operators that that aren't seeing the immediate engagement.
And we've, we've spoken to them on on several occasions. One of the, one of the, one of the missed opportunities last year was when they, during the crushes, uh, when they bring the players here, where they stay, because they have to, you know, and and the hotels that were used were in Cuyahoga County because they couldn't get the rates. And Commissioner Lundey, you've, you've talked about that before.
Yeah, 'cause the, the, the host team has to provide the hotels, so, but they had reached out to to local hotels. They weren't able to get the pricing that was competitive, uh, for the teams to stay. So unfortunately, the teams are staying in in Cuyahoga County. And we ran in the same thing with the the MAC Conference, uh, which is a great series. If you get a chance to go there, you'll see some of the future, um, major league stars. I'm trying to think of the, uh, Lauer is the last name, the Midview pitcher who now pitches for the San Diego Padres. I think he was with, uh, Kent State at the time. I saw him pitch in that, that, uh, conference championship series. So it's really, it's really good level of baseball. The problem was that arrangements had been made already with the MAC Conference to have people do the packaging, as you said, uh, at hotels in Cuyahoga near the airport, which made no sense because the ballpark's in Avon. You would think you'd wanna go to games, be able to run your hotel room, freshen up, come back for the later game, whatever it may be, instead of having to drive all the way back to your hotel or, you know, just stick it out for the whole day. So, uh, those are some things that we've been working on behind the scenes, but, uh, we realize the importance trying to get people into the beds. That's where the bed tax comes from, to support, uh, Visit Lorraine County.
And the discouraging thing is our bed tax is significantly lower in most, in most areas, not all, than it is in Cuyahoga County. Uh, but we'll continue to address those issues as we go down the road. But but, you know, we were able to share that with folks last night. I I think they were satisfied that we're aware of the problems and working on them. And the, and the biggest issue of the night was the AB and Bs are not paying bed taxes and and where we're going with that. As I explained, we've, you know, Jerry sent them the hostile intimidating prosecutor's letter about having to pay. And we mailed out a lot of those letters to everybody we could identify. And we mailed out a lot of those letters to everybody we could identify that's kind of listening. But the enforcement...
Kind of the honor system.
Well, a lot of it's on the honor system. The, even, even the hotels are on the honor system. They forward their bed tax to us. There's not a big auditing component, but they're, they're bigger, and they can be audited, and so they usually follow suit. There's been times when we've missed checks, and we had to go back and remind them they haven't paid their bed tax. But with the AB&BS, it's really hard. As, you know, I thought they, people understood, we can't sit in the bushes and observe who's going into an AB&amp;B and see we got the bed tax on that. We'll try again, but there is a big siphoning of resources from the hotels. Not just about us getting our 3% bed tax. It's, it's about the hotels that are not filling the beds, and their vacancy rates being much higher, while the AB&BS are not paying anything into the community. And the folks that are getting hit the hardest, though, are the B&amp;Bs. The AB&Bs are giving them a really, really bad run for their money with regard to the, being able to get at least a responsible vacancy rate that keeps their business viable. It's, it's a problem that still needs further addressing. I don't know what the solution is, but, but, but we'll have to put some attention to it, see if we can at least get a better environment, so that everybody's on a level playing field.
Yeah. And I know that, you know, sometimes people refer to it as too much government oversight, but, you know, these, every, I've always said, I just want parity. I just want everybody to play by the same rules. You know, it's not fair to a reputable business who plays by the rules every single day to have to compete against somebody who doesn't play by the rules, you know? And, you know, that's, that's what the requirement is. You got to charge the bed tax, and you can't just kind of brush it off, so.
It was interesting. One of the bed and breakfast folks shared that while the Airbnb's are a problem, they also, there'd be a regulation issue, because they typically will attempt to go, bypass the Airbnb fee as well. They will make their arrangement outside the Airbnb booking system. So, they're not just dodging the tax, they're dodging the fee, right?
All right. Last thing on my report. The county commissioners are partnering with Second Harvest Food Bank to do a food drive. We'll have some bins here in some of our departments, but we're also going to collect at the Collection Center, which is at 540 South Abbey Road in Elyria. They are open on Monday from 12 to 4, Wednesday from 12 to 6, and Saturday from 9 to 3. So, breakfast items, canned vegetables, canned chicken, boxed rice, peanut butter, coffee, tea, things like that. Anything that you'd like to donate would be very much appreciated.
You were the past chair?
I am the past chair. President Marsha Ballinger is the new chair, so...
And you're a meritorious chair, right? So you, you go to all the stuff?
I do. I go to all the alumni. I'm an alumni forever now, so...
We're, we're, they are a valued resource that, that actually dwells in the background in Lorain County. They're out there on Baumhart Road in an area that doesn't really get a lot of traffic anymore. They got a great facility, great people, and the people that support them, the, the community folks that come out are just amazing for what work they do.
Because they're a well-oiled machine.
They are.
There's, there's more than too many people food challenged in Lorain County. And the amount of people that are getting SNAP assistance to fill the gap is huge, but there are people that do not get SNAP that are still food challenged, and we have a lot of youth that are not certain where meals are coming from on a regular basis. We, we talk about the drug epidemic, the opiate problem. We, those are things you more visibly see, but, but the hunger problem, especially in the colder months in Lorain County, is significant. And there's just places that are addressing it. I, I think, Jeff, you work at the one at St. Mary's here, over here. I see the folks out there in line all the time. Thank you for what you do there. There's other ones. There's a big one at the college. We have students on the campus that, that they're trying to improve their life. They're trying to get to a level of self-sufficiency in the community through education, and, you know, and then on to a job. They can't, they can't feed themselves. So, it's, it's the problem that nobody really talks about enough, but these folks are making a difference.
They are. Yeah. And you could also do cash donations, and all the food and the donations that you give stay here locally to, for your friends and family, neighbors. So, that was a long report. Sorry. Turning into, turning into Matt Lundt.
Yeah, I was going to say. I knew that was coming. Well, I'm determined to give the shortest report today, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, right. I had the opportunity to attend the Lorain County Public Health Board meeting, the annual meeting, and I know about a year ago, everybody's talking about all, all these communities merging, Lorain, Elyria, Avon Lake, so on and so forth, and things have gone just smoothly. I remember when that was being discussed, I said, you know, Dave Koval and his team, they run a good operation over there. I think you guys will be pleased. And a year later, I think you could hear crickets in the room. You know, there were no complaints, no tension compared to more than a year ago, when all this was being looked at. So congratulations to the Board of Health, all the communities, everybody working well together, and for Dave Koval and his leadership. Congratulations, Jack Kilroy with the Sober Seventeenth, which took place on Sunday, actually on St. Patty's Day over there in Avon Lake. I got there right around 5 o'clock, and they sold their last tickets. So, it was a complete sellout. So I just wrote them a contribution and then, then left. But nonetheless, they had a packed house there, and obviously, they got to comply with fire codes, so they can't just let everybody come in. But, but always a great event, and just want to thank Jack for all that he, he does on that. We were talking about workforce development earlier. Just can't encourage people enough to get into the Ohio Means Jobs System. It is well worth making the trip over there. I run into so many people who talk about being, being underemployed and looking for new opportunities. Well, the best way to try to find a new opportunity is to have your skill set actually matched up with new opportunities that are out there. And, but the first thing you got to do is you got to get into the Ohio Means Jobs System. Leanne, on your point about satellite TV, I think the issue we run into is technology with cable operations. When a lot of those franchise agreements were made, because I know I worked on the one in Avon Lake, they had what they called the PEG channels, the Public Education Government channels that were set up. You know, those are actually designated channels. I don't believe that the satellite folks have those set up in any way like that.
DirecTV has one.
DirecTV has one?
That's what we switched to.
Oh, okay.
In hopes of trying to, you know, broaden the horizon.
Yeah. So there may be a technology gap there, but we can certainly find out. There's a way to fill that. And then also, I know Sunshine Week was held recently. Sunshine Week is a week where the emphasis is on journalism and, and the public becoming more aware of what's going on, and the hard work that journalists do each and every day. I'm a big believer in freedom of the press, and First Amendment, and, and journalists, I believe, do a, do a very good job in this country. But I would encourage journalists to really look at Jobs Ohio. I'm kind of baffled how now, all of a sudden, when I was in Columbus, I was designated as the big troublemaker with Jobs Ohio, because I kept calling for greater accountability, being able to audit their books, and greater transparency. The way they operate, they receive hundreds of millions of dollars from the liquor taxes in Ohio. Their only requirement is to produce a yearly annual report. They get to determine what goes into that yearly annual report. Obviously, if you're putting together a yearly annual report, you talk about your hits. You don't really talk about your misses. As far as being required to meet public records laws, they can hide in the shadows like you have never seen an organization hide in the shadows, because they're not held to the same standards. I just find it so interesting now that Governor Kasich has left, even seeing a lot of my former colleagues who were big proponents of Jobs Ohio now all of a sudden want it to be more transparent. You should look at the payroll. Payroll would just blow you away. People in the community would be extremely aggravated if you saw how so many members of that payroll are making more than $200,000 a year. That payroll is out of sight. They don't have to comply with ethic standards. In other words, I could be sitting on the Jobs Ohio Board, make a loan to you through the state, or some grant through the state through Jobs Ohio, and the very next day, I could go and work for you, because there's no ethic standards in place. It's, it's, it's really, it's a disgrace, is what it is. And so I would just encourage local media and the, and the general public, please Google Jobs Ohio. You'll probably find me in a lot of those articles, but it's just not a good thing for Ohio. It's certainly not transparent. It's certainly not accountable. There needs to be greater accountability. I'm all in favor of economic development. Don't have a problem with that. But they even did one of those politifacts. Remember the politifacts, where they have the meter whether it's false or whether it's true? And mine pinged all the way true when I said that the way that the current laws are already put in place, the Ohio Revised Code in Ohio, there's all kinds of protections to make sure that if you're a business applying for loans or grants through the state, that your personal financials are not exposed to the public or your business plan. But Jobs Ohio is, just hides in the, in the shadows. It's one of the most secret government, quasi-government organizations that you're ever going to encounter. Look it up, research it, and certainly tell the legislators that you approve greater transparency and accountability. The auditor himself could not audit their books. It's the craziest thing in the world. They come around here and audit our books all the time. So, look it up. It's, you'll find it very interesting. I think you'll be quite angry and aggravated after you learn more. But if they're saying that they finally want to get on board and change, I guess I wasn't a troublemaker after all. That completes my report.
Okay. So last Thursday, after the State of the City in Wellington, when Commissioner Kokowski headed to Columbus, I headed over to the North Coast Mayor's Luncheon, which was held at Tom's Country Place in Avon. Mayor Jensen, Hunter, Bring, and Zilka get together. They share interesting information and update on the growth on the eastern portion of our county, as well as the efforts of collaboration that they've shared in. And a lot of very exciting things are still happening over there amidst all their growth. But probably the big standout from that event was that Mayor Jensen had the Avon High School kids put together a video, and he was a very tough act to follow. They did a quasi-news report, somewhat Saturday Night Lifestyle, and it was on video. It was very well done. So that was a great, great effort on the parts of the students who participated, and they were there to attend. On Friday, I was able to attend the 2019 Lorain County Urban League Diversity Inclusion Program. It was an excellent program and very well-attended. Good speakers were there, and great information was shared. Friday evening, I was able to support the Clearview Education Steak Fry over at the Antlers in Lorain. Again, the food there is excellent. If, if you have an opportunity to do a function in Lorain, Antlers with the Spectrum Group is doing a really nice job. On Monday, there was a ribbon cutting for Ohio Business College, their HVAC facility over on Pearl. Representative from Mayor Rittner's office was there, and I attended, and they had individuals with different HVAC companies as well in attendance. And it's a nice facility, very nicely done. One of the things, since we are amidst the merge of the Addus and the Mental Health Board, it seems as though we're hearing from more and more individuals, organizations, and folks who are in support of what we're doing, felt it was long overdue. One of the things I found interesting, we received the Recovery Ohio Advisory Council Report from Governor Mike Dewine this week, and one of the things he references right away is far too many Ohioans have died, too many continue to struggle with mental health and substance use disorders. Everything he references within his advisory initial report ties the two together, and it, it just shows that, that we are essentially on the right path with this, and I'm optimistic to see that we will have greater, greater results as a result of that effort. And finally, my last mention is Pace Foundation. In conjunction with the Louise R. Johnson, Johnson Foundation, both nonprofit organizations, are hosting their fourth annual prom dress giveaway on April 6. And that's going to be over at the Greater Victory Christian Ministries Church on Reed Avenue. And what they are, both organizations are created to empower in men or youth and help students attend college, but this event makes prom more affordable for young women who may have the desire to attend their high school prom but couldn't afford to. And what they're seeking is in-kind donations, donations of gently-used formal dresses, which in most cases, that means one wearing, formal shoes, accessories, and the donations will, the proceeds, any gift cards, any donation at all, goes directly to those students, and they need those donations by April 1. So, a good, good, feel-good organization in effort to support. That concludes my report.
All right. So tomorrow, we'll have our landing at 10:00 a.m. for correspondence.
I would move that the reading be waived.
Second, discussion. Mr. Lundt?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Okay. Well, at this point, I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the county administrator and the Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second, Mr. Lundt?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.